This is the longest minute it exists. Usually.
It's normal. You upset, David?
Yeah.
All right, fabulous. Well, let's get going, everybody. Welcome to the Lincolnville Select Board Meeting. It is May twenty seventh. And with the indulgence of the board and everyone here, I think we're gonna step outside the routine just slightly. Because usually we get these beautiful town reports that all of our committees, commissions, boards contribute to, to share information leading up to our town meeting. And the board had decided to dedicate this year's town report to the memory of Willis Allen Thomas. And, you know, who's a remarkable individual and, you know, served the town of Lincolnville and the Select Board, the Budget Committee, the Historical Society, you know, he was an outdoorsman. He very much endeared to this community. And we had intended on presenting it to his son Peter. And Peter's tragically passed away recently. And so we thought we would take a moment, just have a brief moment of silence and gratitude for Alan's service, not only to our nation as a veteran of the Navy, but to our community and also for for Peter. Yeah, so, thank you. And yeah, so it's usually we like to make it personal. We like to visit the person and make it a really special thing. And the universe conspired in a very different way this year. So town reports. This is also in the the symbolic gesture, the town reports are now available to everyone. They will be available here at the town office. Where else?
We'll have them at the store, two store Owens General Store. They'll let us be distributing point Drake's Western Auto, Mike's Line Repair, Beach Store, Library.
And pick one up. Great read. And also we have select person Ray and Tarantino. Select person Ray, in his other role as a representative, is stuck in Augusta. And select person Tarantino had a family funeral to attend to, so they were unable to be here tonight. And so Karen, would you read the quote for the evening?
Oh, yes. If they don't give you a seat at the table, bring a folding chair. Shirley Chisholm.
Thank you very much. And then I'd like to open the podium for any non-agenda items. Being no one here with something outside of the agenda, we'll move along to the administrator's report.
A couple of things outside of your agenda items. Absentee ballots are available for June tenth here at the town office during normal business hours. The culverts on Greenika Road have all been replaced now. They hope to do the repaving of the trenches tomorrow and the next day. And in preparation for resurfacing the entire road as weather allows moving forward. And our illustrious harbor cam was up today and then down today and up today and down today. They would thought we had it, but we still have a little bit more to do, but it's very close.
Great.
Outside of that, I can't think of a thing.
Any questions, David? All right. We'll move on to upcoming meetings and announcements. Take me for it.
Yeah, all meetings are here at the town office unless announced otherwise. The Harbor Committee meets Wednesday, May twenty eighth, six P M. We're having a community resilience public meeting on Sunday, June first, four P M. At the Lincolnville Central School. That's open, obviously open to the public. We encourage everyone to attend if possible. Budget Committee meets on Monday, June second, six P M. Lincolnville Central School Committee meets Monday, June second, six P M. At the Lincolnville Central School. The Comprehensive Plan Review Committee is scheduled to meet Tuesday, June third, six P M. Select Board will meet to approve the to approve the bills and any other quote unquote, emergency items that come up on Monday, June ninth at five P M. Recreation Commission is scheduled to meet Monday, June ninth at six P M. Voting via secret ballot for town meeting will be done on Tuesday, June tenth, from eight A M. To eight P M. In the gymnasium of the Lincolnville Central School. Planning Board is scheduled to meet Wednesday, June eleventh, six P M. Conservation Commission meets Thursday, June twelfth, four P M. Town meeting, the open portion will be on Thursday, June twelfth, six P M. At the Lincolnville Central School. A Midcoast Solid Race Corporation Board of Directors meets Wednesday, June eighteenth, six thirty at the Camden Town Office. The Lincolnville Town Office will be closed on in observance of Juneteenth on June nineteenth. And the Select Board meets next in regular session on Monday, June twenty third, six P M. At the town office.
Nicely done. Thank you. And are there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? Being none, let's move along to the meeting minutes from the twelfth of May.
I moved the board approved May twelfth, twenty twenty five meeting minutes as presented. Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor? Thank you all very much. You're welcome. Select person Ray, we hope you don't create a sound barrier at all.
A little construction on Route three.
Yeah, well, welcome. And with those dispatched, we have ongoing conversation regarding expanding the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee. We received a number of community interest forms with folks expressing interest in serving on that committee, in addition to the folks who have been working very hard. And so we had received a couple of last minute community interest forums. And so we decided to set a hard date of last Wednesday to say that's when we're not accepting any community interest forums for that. And so curious what the board is thinking.
I spent some time reviewing all of the, because we have the current members plus the new applicants in the package and I have four that I would recommend adding to current members that would, I feel, round out the overall committee. And with the addition of myself as the first Select Board Member Representative, that would bring the total to eleven, which I think is a a good number. It's manageable. Thirteen was the maximum, I think I was thinking, and that's probably getting on the edge of unreasonable.
Okay. Yeah. Do you want to make a motion now?
You didn't have any other new people here. Jake Metzler's in there.
Would you like to come and introduce yourself to the board? We always like to put a face to it, you know, the make it personal outside of a forum.
I assume you wanted me to come up here.
Yes, please. Thank you.
Yeah, Jake Metzler recently moved to the town, but has owned plan here for four years. That's the state of building for those that don't know. And my background is in four, three in conservation. I work for a statewide nonprofit in conservation and you know, interest in, you know, kind of organized planning and thoughtful, you know, what's going on to help the future. So I thought this was a nice fit and saw that you were looking for folks and interested in helping out.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Any questions for Dave? Super. Thank you so much for coming to the meeting tonight.
No problem. I didn't know it could be so exciting.
Just for anyone watching at home or the folks here in the audience, we did have a really good showing of the people who had already submitted their interest forms and they wanted to verify because they were there and spoke to their forms last time that they wouldn't have to be here again tonight. So we gave them a pass.
I don't know. I apologize. I don't know Justine. I don't know if she's here. I don't see anybody.
I don't think so. Yeah. Yeah. So Steve, did you want to make a motion?
We'll start the conversation. I move to appoint Clifford Sandy Cameron, Jay Foster, Stacy Para, and Andy Young to the Comprehensive Plan Committee with a term expiring June twenty twenty five.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded. Do you want to have discussion? I mean, it certainly, you know, our our desire to have individuals in the land use committee.
Right.
No one currently serving on the planning board expressed interest, but Jay has a legacy of serving on the planning board. So, yeah, so, yeah.
Plus, I believe Jay was involved in the previous campaign as well, which is nice.
Okay, yeah. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor? Thank you very much. And there are lots of other community activities and roles that I can see you being a wonderful asset for. So don't be discouraged. Thank you so much. Stay or you can also thank you so much. And thank you to all of the individuals that expressed interest. It was really heartening to see a really robust response to our request. So moving along, we have a liquor license renewal application from the Inn at Sunset Point. Next before us, and I see no issue with the application with the exception that's been tripping everybody up of the change in the language on question twenty. It used to say you're a school dormitory or place of worship. And now it says school dormitory and place of worship. And so if we can just make sure that the school is included in that application, so it can be complete and correct. We wouldn't want them to be held up in any way. Does someone want to make a motion then?
I move to board grant the liquor license requested by Ralph Incorporated during business as the Inn at Sunrise Point and that the town administrator be authorized to indicate such on the Bureau of Alcohol and Beer Operations Portal with the update as specified.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yeah, please.
So when do I need to make that change?
I think what we've been doing with Bablo's I don't want to say blessing, but they're okay, is when we submit the approval. There's a section for comments and I can put that comment rate in there and then they'll know. And when they send the inspector down, they'll do their magic and then give you a permit.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, we just want to make sure nothing's going to hang you up.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, super. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Have a great evening. And we have Becky Johnson at all here to talk to us tonight about looking at a speed limit review for Youngtown Road. Do you want to come chat with us?
Yeah, thanks for putting me on the agenda. So I would like to request that the town of Lincolnville petition main department of transportation to reduce the posted speed limit on Youngtown Road from it's forty and then it goes to forty five to thirty five, the whole road. Youngtown Road is a residential and recreational street with approximately seventy two driveways, not including the houses that are off Making Cliff Road, Thurlow Road, and Trigger's Way. Two active businesses, including Cellar D'Or Winery, which spans both sides of the road and regularly has tour buses and pedestrians crossing and serves as an access point to Camden Hills State Park, including Trailheads to Bald Rock, Hammer Mountain, and Maidens Cliff Road, Maidens Cliff. The road also experiences increased bicycle traffic and bike tours during the summer months and as we have all seen, a noticeable uptick in vehicle volume due to the construction on Route one. And people are driving like it's Route one. The current speed does not reflect the road's mixed use nature and growing traffic pressures. Slowing the speed would enhance safety for the users, including residents, pedestrians, cyclists, and motorists. There were a couple of main communities that have recently done this. High Point Road in Scarborough, they reduced their speed limit from forty five to thirty five to better reflect its stance residential and pedestrian activity. And then Psycho Road in North Yarmouth was just reevaluated in April. And the D O T approved reducing a forty five to forty. And then they had an existing thirty five and they left that. So given these precedents, the unique nature of Youngtown Road, I would urge the board to initiate a request with the main D O T for a speed limit study and to advocate for reduction to thirty five.
Questions, questions from the board for me?
Well, I hate to raise a class that has not broken the speed limits. They want, I didn't come by Youngtown Road, places are just seventy two.
Seventy two, yes.
Yeah. And are those occupied curb cuts, I guess, the question? How?
They are.
Yeah.
Yeah. As my count from the other day.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Yeah, I mean, we we all know it and see it. And I'm sure it's feeling particularly pecan right now with everyone rooting.
Well, and it's growing. You know, it was originally, I'm sure, forty five when they said, I think that's what the main D O T does. It's just forty five on a rural main road.
Yeah, depend, yeah, depending on the, you know.
It's changed, you know, it's.
Yeah, yeah. And Becky, so you and I communicated a little bit via email. And so basically, we're gonna operate under state law and the D O T. The town of Lincolnville doesn't specifically have the right to do anything about the speed limit.
Right.
There, there is, a town can apply for full responsibility and authority for setting speed limits, but we don't qualify for.
I also read like no town ever does that or wants.
So we're obligated to go through the D O T. And so just for, so everybody knows that the process is that I think they're inundated with these requests, so understanding that it's not necessarily fast pots, like all bureaucratic institutions. And then a field study will be made by the D O T and a recommended speed will be forwarded to the D O T Commissioner and the state police. And their, in their words are, the speed limit could go up, go down, or remain the same. I think it's unlikely that it will go up, but you know, but just that it doesn't necessarily result in a change. And they will notify us of what their findings are, and then we'll be responsible for erecting the correct signage. So.
So what's the first step?
Us approving. Yeah, yeah. So, you know, hearing your request in concurring that we feel that there is a dangerous situation and that there is cause.
I will say, when I let everybody know on the street that I was doing this, I think it was three different people said they had, you know, a number of accidents in front of their house, people being pulled
Yeah.
pulled out of the ditch.
Yeah.
Many times. Well, and the ditches are deep on the Youngtown Road. So it's no joke when you
Yeah.
Traffic coming both directions now, where it used to be, and somebody come one way or another. But there's two people coming over a hill and they're walking. You gotta get out of the way.
Yeah, yeah.
Problem start with the way the three women I was fifty two going by the lane, which is suffering.
Thank you.
Who live right next to the other guy?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, hey, so I love all of the enthusiasm. However, because of freedom of access laws and our millions of subscribers on our YouTube channel and the people watching at home, the conversation needs to remain between the podium and the the board so that it's both recorded, gets on the record, everybody's voice is heard. So Becky, do you have anything else?
I just have one question about the electronics feed sign that is put on. Who gets those results? Are they public?
Yeah.
Almost everything we do is public.
How do you find them?
You ask somebody to download them and share them with you.
Yeah, I'm so curious about it.
Somebody like the town administration.
Shoot, shoot David an email. I will. Yeah, okay. Yeah, super. Okay, yeah, thank you. That's it. Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to get up and speak? And we'll try to keep it to new and relevant so that we're not all just confirming the same thing over and over again. Yeah, sure, gentleman in the back, yeah.
Hi, my name is Jeff Chrisconey. I live at two seventeen Youngtown Road. And I feel compelled to to add on to what Becky said. So my wife and I moved and moved to our house just, well, eight years ago, June second. But in the first seven years that we lived there, we had three accidents outside our house. One was a woman driving too fast in the dark and hit a deer. Another was an unknown cause, but going the other direction, ran off the road into the ditch and took out trees. And then two years ago, somebody came up over the hill and regularly drives the road. A Lincolnville resident driving his daughter to school and slipped on the ice, barely missed our home and took out two fruit trees on her hands. We are literally waiting for the car to come through the living room. So while it's annoying people drive too fast on the road, it is excessively dangerous. There are pets. There are numerous animals constantly on the road that people need to slow down for and veer from. Not to mention, I am also one of the regular walkers on the road. And I have been run off the road and had to jump into the ditch because people are going too fast coming over. We have a lot of blind hills, which I happen to live at the bottom of two of them. Doesn't help. And we noticeably saw an increase in speed when the town repaved the road several years ago. Which the road needed it, to be honest, but and then, and then we have the squealers. Which I think we've all addressed. There's the classic squealer in the sixty six, sixty seven white Impella. There's the guy in the black truck who got a good talking to by Molly Eddy. But several days later continued. And then there's the recent white pickup truck who really likes to slow down, stop, and slam on the gas and go up over the blind hills.
At three o'clock in the morning.
Then too. But, you know, I just wanted to to point out that it is, you know, the other thing I wanted to say is you know, we're bounded by two state highways. You know, one seventy three Beach Road starts at twenty five miles an hour at Lincolnville Beach. In the majority of the home district, it's thirty five, and it doesn't open up again until you pass the majority of the houses outside of the Lincolnville Beach line. We have fifty two, which is, which is forty miles an hour. And both of those highways are wider are are painted divided as well as painted sidelines and have and have better shoulders than Youngtown Road does. It's insane that where I, where my house is, it's forty five miles an hour, which is higher than both of those. So, anyway.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for sharing. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Yeah, sir.
My name is Hayden. Here's my, I live at three thirty. Youngtown Road, so I have a couple of ideas. One is if you could get the counter thing, if we could get one of those from the state to count the traffic now. Because I think traffic speeds and danger things are are found out by numbers. And I think if if we could ask the state, the state is causing this not on purpose, but because of their business on Highway one, state business, it is impacting a town road. And we don't have the resources as a town to handle a state highway. So being as Youngtown Road is not a state highway, as Jeff pointed out, why don't we put a counter there? See how many cars are actually coming? And then come to the state with the laws that you told us and say, look, the count has gone up to this, that means we should have a speed limit of thus and such on a residential road as opposed. That's one idea I have. I think the burden should be on them. Because as he pointed out, there is a state Highway one seventy three. You could do a comparison count. And if it shows that Youngtown Road is being used as the Highway one seventy three, then you have a case to present to the state, which might fast track some of our requests. That's my idea.
Thank you. Sure, one more. Yeah.
Yes, sir. Come on down. Yeah, sir, come on down.
Uh, Jamie cited me. My name is Robert Finley. I live at five sixty-five. Excuse me, Youngtown Road. I'm taking a different aspect of this because I'm part of the biking community. And the bikes in that area are always under some kind of um, duress because of the um, traffic. It, it, almost every almost every hill on the backside of them is uh, you can't see over it. So that they're blinded. So I'm just simply saying, and one other thing is it is part of the great Eastern Greenway. Which surprises me that that hasn't become part of it. As a matter of fact, it might be a situation where you start looking at what's going on on the Lincolnville side of the um, McCutcheon Drive down, down through by the, by the lake. Uh, that's all. I just wanted you to know that there is a deep concern for those people. And as, this is my first time coming here and as an aside, I think now that I know what, how to do this, I, you'll probably see me again. Trying to make Lincolnville center a key destination. Thank you.
All right. Was that a threat?
No.
We're here, we're here listening to have the conversation. So thoughts? Would you, would you? Sure, if it's a new point, I mean, it, we're, I don't think any of us are on a different page.
But since this is public and it goes up and gets reviewed by the people who make the decisions, then it's hard to kind of lay our cards on the table. Um, one of the things that Lincolnville has really going for it, that the residents all seem to cherish, is the fact that we have a lot of wildlife and greenery, and we have fireflies which are going extinct, we have bumblebees which are going extinct. We have um, all kinds of birds, especially right now, they just finished their migration up. And see a lot of roadkill, a lot of roadkill, and someday it's not going to be an animal, it's gonna be a person, absolutely. When I first moved up here, there weren't as many people moving in from away, something that and we're, we're people who moved in from away, but we chose to, we wanted to embrace that culture. Part of the culture in Maine is that people are polite when they drive. Right? You get in a, a traffic jam on Route One, there's nothing anybody can do, nobody's leaning on their horns screaming, right? And I personally have seen, I've heard a lot of complaints from other people who are native Mainers that the people who've come in since COVID have brought a lot more aggressive driving with them. Um, and I think that as a culture that one must decide what they want to preserve. Do you want to preserve the politeness? That's part of Maine culture. Do you want to have that kind of slower, easier way of life that one pushes on the tourists as part of it, or are we gonna allow it to just disintegrate? Because it absolutely has gone up in the last seven years. Um, also, I get a lot of monarchs and so do a lot of people on the road. I just don't want to see them splattered. Anyway, I know it's meandering, I'm sorry, but thank you for the stick.
Thank you so much. Uh, well, we're getting someone to hear the promotion.
One of the existing speed limit established for the Youngtown Road is unsafe. Select or send a letter to Midcoast Region Traffic Engineer for the Maine Department of Transportation requesting the study of the existing speed limits for the Youngtown Road, road be conducted.
So moved. Well, seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Yeah, so. My sport. So what this will do is it will initiate their process, we this is our role in it. Such as it is. Um, and also, you know, the comments made previously. Um, and so we will communicate this and they will put us in their schedule to come and, and do the study. Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I would recommend and that we include in this letter, maybe a reference to the link to this YouTube video, so people in DOT can listen to the comments that were made online.
Sure.
Could hurt if they could find, they gotta find a link.
Yep, yeah. So all those in favor? Thank you very much. Yeah, absolutely. Did. See if they want to move. Something, something new and different?
Yes. What do you request in counter?
I think that's part of the study. That they, that they will do it. Yeah, yeah. Um, okay, thank you, folks. You're welcome to stay. We've got lots of exciting things to talk about, but you also don't have to. All right, well, moving rapidly along and please, if we could limit conversations in the audience so that we can focus on the folks at the podium and the conversations at hand, uh, that would be much appreciated. We have next on our agenda, number ten, uh, the folks from Owens General Store here to chat with us about a crosswalk. Who wants to get in the hot seat?
Hello.
Who else?
Um, I'm Matt Pierce, uh, one of the owners of Owen's Mowing Show Store. How's it going? Good to see everybody.
Um, welcome.
Thank you. So we are asking about having a crosswalk installed or with painted from uh, the bench outside our parking lot to our front entrance of our store. Um, we definitely think it's a safety issue, uh, you know, hopefully slowing people down. Lots of kids there, you know, crossing the road, people parked across the street coming across. Uh, we talked to, or I talked to Daryl at DOT, um, and he was willing to come back to the town. So I came back and talked with Matt Dean about like what we needed to do and how we go from there. Uh, so he helped us make this picture. I don't know if y'all have this yet. Um, to make sure we had like the site distance, has to be at least two hundred feet, which we did, so. Um, that's why I'm here today. And maybe you want to add one more?
It's okay.
Oh, yeah. So we also put out just a quick word to get signatures from people, just, you know, to see what the sport was like. And we got like ninety-six signatures in a couple of days, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think people agree it would be a good safe thing to add in there.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, thoughts from the board or questions?
Sounds like an uphill struggle, necessary, gotta have one. The, the one should be there, in my opinion, probably everybody's opinion, who's been through there. Getting it through the DOT could be a process, as you're finding out, right?
Yes.
Yes. And uh, but at the same time, even though it's bureaucratic process and statute policy may be kind of leaning against having a crosswalk there, I think it's worth, worth making the overture. I don't know how we can do that.
Well.
Because I can see a lot of impediments that David has provided us.
Well, not necessarily impediment. I mean, well, we've got to start with the really boring bureaucratic impediments that the town is facing. Given that we don't have, we don't have any money budgeted for a project like this. If you, if what you're asking is for the town to incur the cost to establish a safe landing zone and then the painting and all of that kind of stuff. We don't have the money to do that. Um, and so that's, that's sort of the first hurdle, but you know, so the DOT has updated, changed, amended their requirements. They used to be a little more lax. They, they're less lax now. Um, but you know, my basic understanding is, is that there's a lack of safe landing zones. In order for a crosswalk to be uh, considered approvable by the DOT.
So, speaking with the DOT and with Matt and like looking at what our options were, uh, we obviously have the walkway right at the front of the store, so that would be one landing zone, which we would have no parking within twenty feet of that landing zone, uh, which is one of their regulations. So we already talked about painting. You know, no parking, putting up signs to keep people from parking in front of the store. Um, and then on the other side, it's raised up where the bench is a little bit, and if we have to come in and, you know, build it up a little bit more to make it a safe. Cause Daryl and I were talking about how it'd be raised just a little bit from like road level. Um, so that's, you know, something else we knew we had to do. Uh, I guess we were wondering the state told us that the town would paint the crosswalk. Excuse me. Um, so yeah, and Matt said as well that I think it's a dolcet in, as the painting. Um, as far as like signage, I know that would be sounds like it would be us that would have to put up the sign. So anyway, we have to have signs on each side pedestrians crossing uh, before the crosswalk, before they get there. Um, and then also the concrete. Uh, I don't know what the exact word is for, but they got, they have the bump so people know that there's a crosswalk there, so. Um, and I know that was one of the other things that we had to do, so. You know, we were wondering, you know, we just.
As in speed bump that goes across the road?
Yes.
Essentially.
It's like all the little bumps on it at the end of all of them. So if somebody can't see, they know they're.
Expectable warning strips.
Yes.
You're welcome. So I, I understand the store side of it, that's your property and everything. Whose land does it land on on the other?
Oh, no.
You have that side of the road as well?
Yeah.
Didn't know that.
Yeah.
Good, good for you.
Yeah, thanks.
Good for you.
Yeah.
Um, that's all I have for right now.
Yeah, so my thought, my thought was, you know, from sort of the budgetary issues from the town, I mean philosophically, I think we're all in faith, I mean, obviously the traffic there is not great. You've got a lot of people crossing back and forth across the road. Uh, we've been a little, we got slapped on the wrist by the DOT for the crosswalk that the town painted by the library because there wasn't an adequate safe landing zone, which we have now brought into compliance with building the sidewalk there. Um, so I'm wondering if, I'm gonna throw this out to the board and yourselves, is if you as the owners would be willing to bear the responsibility of kind of checking all of the DOT boxes and um, establishing those safe landing zones and getting that okay and incurring the initial cost, um, then we can look at, you know, rolling it into being part of our painting program with the other crosswalks that we do. I mean, is that?
That's where I was kind of going is there's, there's some project stuff that has to be incurred here with nothing funded for at the time, but uh, if, if you were able to facilitate that, we would certainly add it into our
Yeah.
regular maintenance.
Yeah.
So.
Bear the responsibility of establishing the DOT approved infrastructure. Getting it painted and, you know, but again, all to the letter of uh, what the DOT requires. Um, then, you know, that could be something that, you know, the town accepts as part of its maintenance.
Okay, so it's like if we have the safe landing zone is the big one, I think with DOT. Okay, and how do we like get? Can we get somebody from DOT to come look with us and kind of?
I would think so, yeah. Yeah, I would think that you would be able to get the local, um.
Yeah, I think if we if working with you folk to refine the initial sketch to show more of the safe landing zones and how those would be distinguished and where the signage would be, blah, 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 then we get Daryl down here to say yep, it looks like you check all the things on the list. And if the town's willing to take on the upkeep responsibility for it.
Yeah, so it's a little bit more of a heavy lift on your end initially, but you know, I think from a safety perspective.
Yeah, going forward, same way for sure.
Yeah. Does that make sense to everybody?
It makes, makes sense to me, yeah.
Um, so. Does the board need to do and, no?
Uh.
You know, any, anything formal at this point, or is it enough to say, you know, or obviously supportive of the, of the concept? Um, and if you're, if you're willing to, to take on that responsibility and adhere to their uh, requirements and then check back in with us, you know, then.
Yeah, I think we can.
Everything will be co-vasatic.
I think Matt, our Matt.
Matt, Matt.
Matt, Matt.
And the DOT.
And can get together something that checks the boxes and we'll get Daryl to say, yep or no. And if he says no, it'll be like, where do we fall down?
Yeah.
And then that point we'll work with Matt and we need to get it installed.
Mm-hmm. I got one, would, would it help with Matt, with the DOT, there was a letter from the, the town encouraging them to work with Owens General Store.
Um, I don't think so. I mean, I think, I mean, ma- this Matt came in to see me. I turned him on to the state, the state turned him back to us. I managed to uh, talk to Daryl and say, you know, I want to make sure that we have the most recent rules, regulations, guidelines, whatever you want to call them, which you have in your packet. And they're, state's fine with towns installing crosswalks on state roads, but you have to check all the boxes. If you don't check the boxes, then you they can come black it out.
Yeah, but I, I can't see any push, you know, I don't, I don't know that a letter is gonna, I don't know, along any, like they're, they're responsive to it. And so as long as you're meeting their requirements. Um, and then we have a follow-up just to make sure that everything's been done according to uh, their requirements, then, yeah.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think so. Um, so and you're saying like if we can get the boxes checked, you would help with the maintaining of the painting of the crosswalk?
Yeah, in few, cause you know, we've the, oh, where's my town report? Yeah, our budget, you know, our, our budget's gonna, hopefully we'll see at the at the uh, um, town meeting where we approve the budget, but yeah, so all of those numbers are, are um, um, and also they're definitely firm through the end of this fiscal year. Yeah, and so we're, we're we don't have money to take on a project like this.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Um, just by way of encouraging Matt and, and Whitney, um, and also for the sake of the board, um, having worked with the comp plan and with our, our local planning organization, MCOG. Um, it's, I've become aware that the MDOT, believe it or not, has planners on their staff now. They actually are in favor of preserving the villages in the, there's actually, as you are aware, the Village Partnership Initiative. Um, which towns can get on board with to, to restore the sense of a village in towns that have state roads going through it. Um, we haven't done that yet here, but um, between the main um, Village Partnership Initiative and the new program that MDOT has called Thriving Communities, they really have the value and that there are planners and now working with their engineers. Um, there is of course a process, um, and it takes time to get things budgeted in, in our town as well, but the values are there. Uh, and it's worth pursuing, so I encourage you to do so.
Yeah, the process is really straightforward and I think they're, they're super receptive. It's it definitely could have been done before and it's unfortunate that that wasn't a requirement from the planning board from the outset in the initial renovation, but here we are and it, I'm grateful that you're willing to tackle it and thank you for having a conversation with us. Yeah, 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 thank you so much. Yeah, have a great evening.
Thanks.
One other time, just a little walk off. Does anybody know where you're?
Yeah, that, no, no, sorry. I'm so sorry, but we can't, we, we, we're doing the work of the people here, so that's why we have an agenda that I approved last Tuesday and so. And so feel free to step outside and have that conversation. I encourage it. Otherwise, that's where the Citizens Forum is for. If you have random, non, non-agenda questions, please come and and otherwise we're moving on. We're we're moving on.
I just wanted to ask if if this could be linked with the sidewalks of those people are trying to get installed with the children.
I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, but I, we aren't going to have a conversation with the audience. If you would like to have a conversation with the board about sidewalks in the center, it has been a lively, ongoing and terrifyingly expensive conversation. But if you would like to get on the agenda and chat with us about it, I encourage it. But we can't have a conversation with the audience of about about a non-agenda item. All right? Thank you. I love the enthusiasm. I really do. Moving along, we have agenda item number eleven, the reviewing the draft special town meeting warrant for June twenty-third.
We following board's instruction have prepared a draft special town meeting warrant for June twenty-third so we could have a closing before the end of June. We browbeat a municipal attorney from elsewhere to review the.
Thanks, Karen. Sorry.
There's no noise. To review the warrant so it does pass legal muster. There was no board action necessary tonight where there's two question marks in there. One is a budget committee recommendation, the budget committee's meeting next week to formulate their recommendation and the harbor committee blank and the harbor committee's meeting tomorrow night to formulate their recommendation. And then it would come back to you at your meeting where you're only going to approve the warrant. Payroll and treasurers because it's daunting. Unless you have questions, comments or concerns.
No, it's pretty straightforward. Fill in the pieces. Okay.
Okay.
Moving along. Karen, you have an update for us?
I do not, other than we have a meeting to the eighteenth of June. Basically, we just had a fair amount of people that couldn't make our regularly scheduled meeting, so.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Sounds good.
I don't have any.
Steve?
Only update I have is I will not be present at the ninth or the town meeting as I'm on a vacation that was rescheduled from the pandemic.
Yeah.
And we had no option as when we could go.
Yeah.
So enjoy.
You enjoy. And I have no update. We have the treasure and payroll warrants to approve and sign.
Move the board approved and signed, you should hear the payroll warrant.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all of you favor. Thank you very much. And as there's no other business, our last piece of business is to have a conversation in the executive session. So.
I move the board into executive session for short title one, section four oh five six A regarding consideration of the budget.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all of those in favor? Thank you very much. Yeah.